Call me need order. You all please rise. And I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on a business that's before us this evening. If you'd join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any flaws or error.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Alderman Bassel.
Here.
Alderman Begley. Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Mayor City Council.
All right. First order of business is one of the reasons 99% of the people here in this room tonight. First of all, I'd like to call up Officer Lindley Vanderlon.
His right hand will be after me. I, Lindsey Vanderlon.
I, Lindsey Vanderlon.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
To the office of police officer.
To the office of police officer.
In the city of Payless Heights.
In the city of Payless Heights.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I, William Chakowski.
I, William Chakowski.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
To office.
To the office.
Of police chief.
Of police chief.
In the city of Payless Heights.
In the city of Payless Heights.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of chief of police.
Of chief of police.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I'm completely overwhelmed by everybody's support. It's been a long road on this job. I'm taking this job from an amazing man, my predecessor Larry Yott, couldn't be here tonight. But I'm just thrilled to have the job and I promise to serve the citizens and the department for the best of my abilities. And thank you very much for everybody coming tonight. I really appreciate it. This is my family. This is my wife Janet.
Get that microphone out of the way.
Everyone, please, we're having a little reception. Feel free to join us immediately following. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
All right. I'll make some remarks later on about the promotion.
I'll see you later.
Need your picture with the book. There's Jeff Soper. You can see him as back as soon as.
We're in the middle of meeting. Hi, Kent.
All right, moving right along. On the consent calendar, we've got a couple of items. City council meeting minutes from February 21st to 2023. Need approval of those? Someone make motion. Move Alderman Lewandowski, second by Alderman Violet. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then approval of payroll on the voucher list for the period ending March 3rd, 2023. Need a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Move Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman Violet. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We have some little bids tonight.
We do.
For the road program.
First bid's from M&amp;J.
The bid is total proposal is $844,896.31. And the insurance and bond is included.
Next is deconstruction.
The total bid is $888,446.64. Bid and insurance is included.
Okay, Lindell Brothers, third bid.
Total proposal is $818,714.26. Yes, yeah, agree. Proposal on the bid line.
Thanks. Gallagher is the last bid.
Thank you. Total proposal is $1,056,626.6. And the bid bond and insurance is included.
All right. All right. Need a motion to refer that to the roads committee, please?
Second.
Move Alderman Clifford is your second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Thanks. All right, under my report, just like to thank former chief Larry Yott for his 50 years of service to the city of Payless Heights. Did a great job, will all be remembered, and I think just by the fact that we were able to actually replace him from within means a lot. Bill Chakowski, who obviously we saw earlier tonight, great man. I've known Bill for probably 40 years or so. And I actually grew up on my block back in the day when I first moved into Payless Heights. And he's been a police officer for 35 years. He began in 1988 as a part-time officer. In 1990, he was made a full-time officer. In 1993, he was selected to serve with the U.S. Customs Service and spent about five years there. And then in 1999, returned back to the city of Payless Heights and was put as a patrol officer. And then in 2000, was promoted to detective, I mean to sergeant. And in 2008, was promoted to deputy chief, which is his current job that he's held ever since then. And he's done a great job running the operations of the office and couldn't think of a better man. And I think that's a credit to Larry and his leadership over the years that we were able to find someone from within and promote from within. I mean, it means a lot, the continuity of leadership and also the continuity of the department itself, so many people. Lindsey, the officer we had here earlier, Officer Vanderlon, started basically as a CSO a number of years ago. Went out to another suburb, which shall remain nameless, and decided when we had an opening that she wanted to come here. Thought it was a better place to work. And we were fortunate to get an experienced officer back in our fold. But keeping in mind, you know, this is what our force is made of, people like this. And I look forward to working with both these people, especially Chief Chakowski, now that we can call him Chief Chakowski. And he'll do a great job and I have all confidence in the world in the gentleman. And, you know, he's been a family man. He's lived in town since 1966. You know, you saw his family here tonight. He's a family man and, you know, just a great leader among men and a great, just a great individual person. So he'll do a super job.
Amen.
So with end of that, city clerk?
No report.
About city treasurer, anything?
No report tonight. Thank you.
Any communications anyone have tonight? Yes?
Just like make a comment about, and congratulate Billy on his, well, as all his accomplishment. But to show you the job he's about, he's accepting, whether it's here in the city of Chicago or suburb. It's a great deal of risk and putting himself on the line for the people of, you know, the community of Payless Heights. Recently, Saturday, I attended a memorial mass in the 22nd district for a recent officer that lost his life in the line of duty. And just relating that just shows you the risk that our officers, no matter where they are, put themselves out there for us. And so when you see an officer like that, you know, just thank him, take him, shake his hand, thank him for the job he's doing. Because they put a lot of risk out there. That poor man's five years on the job, had a wife and young children and never know their father. Sooner or later, this will stop. Right now, we have to deal with it. And anybody that takes on this job, as a young lady that's coming here, whether it's Payless Heights, city of Chicago, or Tinley Park, the risk is all the same. So we wish them the best of luck. Thank you.
Any other communications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to also congratulate Chief Chakowski. The only sadness in this whole event tonight was the little black band he had to wear around his star, which was for police officer Vasquez Lasso from the city of Chicago. Outside of that, Bill's going to be a great guy. He's going to do a wonderful job. He's a great administrator. And not only that, his men under him are going to work their buns off for him. Because they like him. He's got that much respect from his troops.
Very true.
That's all.
Anything else? Citizens wishing to address the council? Not finance?
Mr. Mayor, no report.
All right. Alderman Bassel, public safety?
Yes, Mayor, I have no items on the agenda, but I would just like, once again, like to remind our constituents to ring into the Payless Heights newsletter and read the police report and recommendations for staying safe. Also, thinking about the safety tips that we've been bringing to the council floor for the past several years. It dawned on me that perhaps we're not addressing all of our audience. Because most of these alerts seem to be focused on senior citizens. And though that's very important, I came to the thought that perhaps we're, as senior citizens or as parents, middle-aged people, we may not be transporting those messages down to our children and our grandchildren. For example, a term I haven't heard in years is latchkey. We probably have children or grandchildren that are latchkey people. They come home after school and they may be home for several hours unsupervised. And I just wonder if parents or grandparents send a message to those people that, you know, what exactly would you do if somebody showed up at your front door in your home alone, you're a pre-teen or a young teenager, and somebody comes there with a hard hat on and a safety vest and a tag on and says, "I have to check your gas meter or your water meter." "Let me in the house." Or, "My car broke down and I don't have a phone. Could I come in and use your phone?" et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. What exactly would a young person do when he sees that situation? I see a lot of high school kids, obviously, in the audience. I hate to put them on the spot. I wouldn't ask them that question. But we all feel like we want to be good citizens and helpful and be kind to everyone that we meet. But as a parent and a grandparent, I would suggest that you have those conversations with those people on a regular basis just to remind them that, you know, how to meet those people at the door if they should come and what the procedure is. So other than that, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any other items on my agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Municipal grounds and property, Alderman Begley, he's not here tonight?
No.
He's got nothing? Okay. Planning zoning, Alderman McGovern?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Recreation, Alderman Key?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Roads and construction, Alderman Clifford?
Just that we'll be reviewing the bids that were just opened tonight at the next roads meeting with consideration of other business at that meeting. Other than that, I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. License permits and franchises, Alderman Lewandowski?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Okay, Alderman Violet?
I've got a few.
I think so.
I'd like to move to approve alternative energy solutions to make necessary repairs on the Oak Hills Lift Station generator in the amount of $13,174.35.
Second.
Move Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Key. Discussion?
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
I move to approve payment to Ares Incorporated for the installation of a 12-inch EZ valve in the amount of $16,157.70.
Move Alderman Violet. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman McGrogan. Discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
I move to advertise to bid the 2023 West College Drive water main lining. This is going to be our biggest project upcoming. The repair is going to be in the general area of Route 83 and Austin, perhaps just a little west of Austin. But that's where all of our water comes in. And we've had a number of breaks in that area. And we need extensive work there now. And so this is going to be our major upcoming project.
Okay. Move Alderman Violet. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Key. Any discussion on that?
Second.
Rule call?
Alderman Violet.
Yeah.
We don't, actually, we don't need to discuss. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry about that.
I move to approve painting of approximately 202 hydrants by Giant Maintenance and Restoration, not to exceed an amount of $20,000.
Second.
Move Alderman Violet, a second by Alderman Clifford. Any discussion?
Question?
Yes.
You know, it's funny because I just noticed that today. Is that going to conclude the program for the city or is that just another part?
I believe, I believe there are six stages because each stage is approximately 200 hydrants. And we've got a lot of hydrants. And the project involves reconditioning the hydrants entirely, grinding them down, repainting them from scratch. And it's a fairly extensive and expensive project. And so I believe we're probably in year three out of six, something like that. But it's the kind of project, you don't do all at once. We have a number of projects in the city. We spread them out. It's like a roads program, you know, where we spread it out over time.
We're doing, so you know, I was talking to Adam about the two in roads and I asked Alderman Violet about, we're doing in the Old Town section this year. There's different sections we're moving in here. Not only that, he's going around checking on some of the previous work done that wasn't acceptable. It was only one mill of paint where there were supposed to be six mill of paint. So he's going back and knows to have them redone also at their cost, at the city's cost. So that's where we're at on that.
Any other questions? Rule call?
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
I move to approve payment for professional services with RJN Group for the 2022 sewer rehab design and construction, the 2022 on-call sewer services, and for the GIS services rendering through January 27, 2023 in the amount of $7,962.50.
Second.
Move Alderman Violet and second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
I move to engage in an engineering agreement with RJN Group for the 2023 professional engineering GIS on-call services, not to exceed an amount of $25,000.
Move Alderman Violet.
Second.
Second, Alderman Key. Any discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
I move to engage in an engineering agreement with RJN Group for the 2023 sanitary sewer rehabilitation design and construction supervision, not to exceed an amount of $75,000.
Move Alderman Violet. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Key. Discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Key. Yes. Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
I move to approve an amendment in the engineering agreement with Strand and Associates for the on-call engineering services by an additional $20,000 for the year 2023.
Move Alderman Violet. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Key. Discussion? Is there more work than you thought?
Yeah.
Okay. Rule call?
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
I move to approve the engineering agreement proposal with Strand and Associates for the 131st Street Water Main lining design through the IEP-A low-interest loan program in the amount of $86,800.
Second.
Move Alderman Violet and second by Alderman Key. Any discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Okay, I want to preface the next motion just briefly that we have not had a rate increase of any sort in our water bills since 2019. And the one that we're going to be proposing is substantial. But as anybody can see, over the past few months, we've had a lot of expenditures. And we have a 10-year plan. And we're moving in a direction of a lot of things that have needed to be done for a number of years. And we have a reserve fund that has remained steady, which kind of kept us from needing to do this since 2019. But we're at a point now where the work needs to be done and we need to make sure we have money down the line. So with that in mind, I move to increase the following utility rates. The single-family and commercial water rate increase 4%. And the single-family flat sewer charge rate increased by 50%. And the commercial and industrial minimum sewer charge rate also increased by 50%.
Second.
Move Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Key. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was part of the committee. We actually were running out of time at that meeting to go over it because the meeting was going on. We had all these expenses that we just covered. And as Alderman Violet just said so correctly, we haven't had these increases at all in 2019. But at the end of the meeting, I was concerned that I didn't think we had all the data that we needed. And so with that, I would like to make a motion that we, let's see, defer? Defer back to committee just because we could still make this motion next month. Because I think if we deferred, it would have to come back up next month. And so, you know, and I think that, I pointed out a couple of things, but we were in a hurry because we had another big meeting at 7:00. And I think that we will be getting some additional revenue down the line from places like Pete's, maybe this possible new development that's going to be coming into town, and other sources that we have. Because the big reason that we wanted to do this is when we look out to 2027, and if I make a mistake down, Jeff can correct me, but we have a potential running into a shortage. And that's why this 50% increase on the sewer charge was brought up. On the same token, you know, I'm looking at it a couple of different ways. Not only maybe we might get some additional revenue, but also too, in some of the areas of our city, some of the residents are really getting, taken advantage of by the sanitary district and because they don't supply any type of sewer. And we have a couple of subdivisions and maybe a third one will be coming on board where that would happen. So to me, you know, I was even thinking that we might have a couple of other ideas that we could try to pigeonhole into it. So in a nutshell.
I'd like to respond.
I'd like to make it to, I think I said it correctly, didn't I, to the city attorney?
Motion to refer back to committee. Need a second and a vote.
Okay, so I want to defer it.
Refer. Defer takes a, you have to go to the regular meeting on.
But it goes back automatically?
No. It goes back to this meeting.
You want to go to the next council meeting?
It goes back to the next regular city.
I want to go back to next council meeting.
Refer to your committee.
Defer.
Refer.
Refer back to committee. So we could vote on it next month.
Yeah, it takes a second and a motion by the council.
Can I comment before?
Give it a second.
I'll second.
We've already, this issue has been discussed at the last two meetings. Two meetings ago, it was brought up for the first thing. And Alderman McGrogan asked that we wait until the February meeting. It came up at the January meeting and we postponed it till the February meeting because the numbers that we received from Jan and from Adam were incomplete. They didn't include 2022. And Alderman McGrogan asked that we wait. They didn't include 2022. And Alderman McGovern asked that we wait until the 2022 numbers came in. Our Public Works Director, our Finance Director, our City Administrator, all of you have been able to look at the numbers that are projected. And now, because we waited one meeting, 2022 is also included. The fact is, if you look at the chart that we've been given, we will run out of money in 2027. We have projects that we need to complete. We've always had, we've always maintained a healthy reserve fund, and we want to continue to do so. Down the line, at the last meeting, Alderman McGovern brought up the possibility of borrowing money at some point down the line to complete projects. However, I think that, I think most of us realize that to borrow money, you have to have money. I mean, you need to have credit. I mean, we've always, we've always had money in reserve. And we may very well, when some of these projects are very costly, and we may very well need to borrow money. But if we want to get the very best rate, we need to show that we have money. It's kind of a lot to swallow all at once. However, we haven't had a rate increase for years now. And our Finance Director, our City Administrator, and our Public Works Director have gone over these figures, and they've all indicated that this is necessary. And I agree with them, and I would like to move forward with the vote. Well, it was just, it was just made a motion.
The motion is to refer it back to committee, so, so we got a second on that. So at that point...
Yes.
Okay, we need a motion, vote on that motion to refer it back to committee, okay?
I just have one question.
You can still comment on that motion, but that's, it's got to be germane to that motion, so.
It goes automatically, doesn't it?
No, you got to vote on it.
I thought it goes automatically.
No, if it goes to council, automatically.
To defer goes back?
You want it back to committee, correct?
I want it to go back, so we, to next month's meeting, because as I pointed out, I have other comments, but I'm trying to stay in voice.
Let me ask you, are you trying to get to come right back to the next council meeting or to the committee meeting?
We'll go back to committee, and then after it's...
To go back to committee, it's got to be referred.
Motion to refer.
Right.
To defer would bring it to the next meeting itself, the next council meeting, as it stands now.
With no discussions. So maybe I should go to defer. I'm going to go to defer.
Defer takes a motion and a second, and automatically goes to the next city council meeting.
Yes, I want to make a motion to defer.
That was seconded already.
Okay, but that wasn't, that wasn't the motion initially. The initial motion was to refer. You have to withdraw your motion.
Yeah, I withdraw my first motion to make a motion. Or Jared, you want to withdraw your second?
I'll withdraw the second.
And I'll make a motion to defer to the next city council meeting.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so then it's deferred.
Just a point of word, because I actually talked, okay, so are we done with discussion on that?
Yes.
I just have one question. When do those rate increases, proposed rate increases go into effect? Immediately after following a vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The next billing cycle, right?
I just want to point out a couple of things that...
Well, at this point, you can't.
Okay.
That should be germane, get your information for the next meeting.
Bring it up to them, and you'll see it next month. Probably the same format, but...
Okay, anything else?
That is the end of my report.
All right, economic and business development?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McGovern?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any old business?
I think this is old business already, for half an hour ago. But I would just like to also congratulate Bill Chakowski for his promotion. A great guy and a great public servant. I remember barely 50-some years ago, when I first moved to Palis Heights, the Chakowskis were one of our first community friends. Bill Senior and his lovely wife Nancy, great people, as were all Bill's children. And I believe I remember Bill's children babysitting for my children. So it's been a long haul with the Chakowskis. I congratulate them and I wish them well. Chakowski will be a name long embedded and remembered in Palis Heights.
Definitely a long name, yeah. It's a long name, right?
I still don't know how to spell it, even though it's...
And he's got a, he's still got a son on the police department, so he'll end up staying there for another 30 years.
All right. Any other citizens? New business?
Just a memo, just so people know, in relation to our sewer and water thing, that we just got through approving over $261,000 worth of repairs. So keep that in mind when you're going over this. And in the future, it's only going to get more, the ones I looked at over the years, water main breaks and things. The city's starting to show its age, and we got to address these things. They're getting more and more serious.
Source system's 50 years old. It's probably about $15 million is going to have to be paid over the next couple of years.
Well, that number was discussed, but I mean, I'm just saying, keep dollars in perspective.
I appreciate what you're saying, yeah.
That right along tonight was a quarter of, over a quarter of a million dollars, keeping up the issues.
Okay. Need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Don't forget to sign that.